I want to thank you all for coming out. And I want to thank especially those that are running. And those that are running, you guys are standing up for all the people in the channel. I want to thank you for that. We'll give it a couple of minutes because we have a couple of candidates there on the way. Can you all hear me? Back there? Yeah, 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 yeah.
No, he is.
Yeah, he is. Hello? Is that better?
Yes.
There you go. Well, I'm going to see if you guys. I don't see any shouting. This has never started a couple of months ago because we have some excellent individuals that have signed up to run. And I want to represent you all that are out there. There's a lot of people still coming in, so we'll just move along with that. But what I want to say is, as we progress as West County gets bigger, as the radio starts growing, we've had a lot of great leaders. And I'm going to introduce, we've had a lot of women leaders. Some great women that have led West County by the way. Some great, great decision making. I want to introduce former West County Commissioner, who we have. We want to thank you for your service. Also, I want to introduce another great woman here. Ms. Alawat Kolasis. She's a candidate for many great leaders. Great work. So we have a lot of great women running and also are in campaign again, the campaign season for reelection. We have a great board member, Lisa Flosch. And right next to her, we have a gentleman that has been very powerful with the USC. I'll get him to my work. What I found out with doing debates is interviewing people that are running, you make a lot of good friends. You make friends with people that are thinking in common ground. They may say, why do you do this? Well, I'm going to go back a little bit. I'm going to go back about 20 years. Supposed to get people back, get people in here from the old store. I am from, born and raised all over the place. And my father was living in Jersey and Jersey and South Jersey. So, you know, we traveled. We saw, we saw America to its fullest. When we came back here, I was in Virginia. Many not great individuals left. For about 16 years, I was out and then decided to move back. Moved back to race family. Lived in Dallas for about 15 years. Did not even know my neighbors, but I knew my clients. I knew the people that structured my school and helped me in school and everything else. Those were the people that became my people before. So when I moved back to the city, I started seeing a kind of community that everybody knew each other. A community you want to be proud of, to be involved with. I moved down there, a lot of people don't know me, except the sheriff. We moved down here, people actually will remember us. And the sport that I belong to and that saved my passion actually wrapped me up in a phone voice. That's what everyone ever says. But what I saw, well, turn, you know, and here's a word that I'm going to use on a kind of podcast. I hear a lot of, I hear a lot of this word, especially social media. Our politicians are corrupted. The true word is corrupt. They use corrupted. And they claim that every single one of them is. No, it's not true. They claim that there's a lot of issues with police going after small businesses in a way. Building inspectors going after that in a way. I saw that, I experienced that. So after putting a stop to that getting involved with politics, it's just a way to change that. Put good leaders inside to change that culture, subculture that's inside. And you realize that it's very, very deeply embedded. And it's not the ones who are in that. It's the departments that are, they're shamed. So we need to calm down. But we in general have to do that. We have to step up to the plate. And you know what? Start removing these people that will murder retirement maybe. But we have to do something about that. We have some great individuals that always stand up some way and some way. Just for the races. There are two people that go in. One person's in the roots. One person's in the lead. If there's more, there's only one winner. A lot of you know that I've always been involved with boxing and the sobath and all that stuff. We had a tremendous team. Tremendous, great champions that come out and work. A lot of them are firemen, a lot of them are police officers, a lot of them are educators. Couple of my lawyers and doctors. We have a couple of, we have lieutenant commander, we have a full term. That come out. So we're very proud of that. But there's something that I used to say when we used to go inside. Everybody's afraid to go into the ring. And I was afraid of going into the ring. So you use those butterflies to propel you to do the best you can do. That's what debates are about. You confront somebody that's against you, against your ideas. Or you might think or disagree. But you face, and you face it in front of the people that have been brought for you. The day I used to do this, and people used to get mad at me. I used to show up at tournaments in San Antonio and go to the streets. I'd walk into the dressing room with my guys behind me and they used to say, alright guys, who's going to be second? And everybody just kind of looked at me, looking at the boxers and said, who are you that? Someone stay. You know, that's the way you win. It's all psychological. But getting to what I'm trying to get at is very simple. When you put your name down on that dotted line, you're asking, you're actually asking the people that you're trying to represent to hire you. So why not ask them questions? Why not talk to them? Why not find out who that person is that's trying to represent you and make a decision for you? We have to do it. It doesn't matter anymore whether they're Republican or Democrat. Left or right wing. Same bird. Once you get inside, something happens. The promise in the act that they said they were going to do is ripped up. And you have to start actually saying, hey, you know what? This is what you said. This is what you promised and said to them. If you're a city councilman, and in four years, you haven't figured out that you need to fire lights, you need to fire a station, you need to side watch, you need to, right? You're not going to do it in the next 40 years, what for? This is not for you to understand how to drift that. This is for you to lead better. You know, so we have to change a lot of things. We just, we're post pandemic. And people say, why do you talk about it? We're post pandemic, it opened the eyes to a lot of people. And those eyes were open. The mirrors were broken, the smoke was longer there. Now we're looking at you and saying, we didn't do this. We didn't do this right. We all understood you. But our small businesses were destroyed. Our employment was destroyed. What are you going to do about that? And with that being said, I need to say, I'm going to thank our Commissioner, Jesse, who sent us. And Jesse, I want to thank you. Because Jesse was part of the crew that was known as the West County Commission. The Commissioners of West County, Eldup and Loraven. Our Texas state representative, Eldup Loraven. Our US Commissioner, Eldup Loraven. This administration practically denied us already. And if we continue going the way it's going, we're going to back rock the little part. Nonetheless, I want you all to say, don't start talking about politics. I want you all to look and see, or even think about accepting my politics and my ideas. We have to wake up. The only thing, the best thing that happened is we woke up. People realized the mirrors are broken, the smoke is gone, but the drifters got better. So we need to understand that, say. So with that being said, we started this debate because the vote was happening. And with that, my cousin got two bags of whatever he was having for you all too. I'm going to introduce him to come up here because he has a podcast called The Radio 247. Hard to forget those off if you've known me since I was up there. We got together and we said, Jesse, we made it together. And I said, we become very good friends with people. And we went to people. We become very friendly with Mr. Joe Ryan. We become very friendly with Rachel Brain and concern my brother. So we can't really be against one another. So I told Jimmy, I want to give him a moderate that way. It's very things about fairness. Very things about being able to move forward. So I'm going to introduce you too, if you some of them.
Thank you, Paul, again. This is all, you got to give credit to Paul before for doing a great job. Thank you, Paul, for you. Paul has been in business and doing podcasting for about six years or so. If you look at the number of episodes, I don't know, 500 episodes, I mean, he's hit them out. So I give him a lot of credit. In fact, Jason John actually, I couldn't be that loud. Paul took that mantle and pretty much he's been the only one after doing podcasts almost a daily basis. So I congratulate Paul on hard work. And because he has a heart in favor of the community. And I give a lot of credit to all of you who are ready to office because it is not easy to run. I'm fully aware because I was here for 32 years. Every time we have to run, we all have wonderful people supporting us and we have to pay this. It is normal. It is very normal. The goal here is for you to concentrate on your own convictions, your own philosophy, your own thoughts, and present this to the public. And that's the first big decision. Our community is changing every few years as they're moving, thinking. So if you catch that way, you might just get in there. Or if you're not the right way, you're going to be there for many years like Jesse did. Which I congratulated for doing a great job as the county commissioner. And because obviously you need to have the right tempo, the right thinking to reconnect with the people. So I got bring it up to this debate. But the other day, I've been doing podcasting for about three years. And I see a need and I'm hopeful that we allow people to do more podcasting, more shows. Because the community needs to know where their carry set. It is unfortunate that we had a lot, either I had a pair of carries we're going to run. Forcing where we get money and where we get rock to come forward. If you're going to run for office, it is the carry's responsibility to come forward and let us know what your chief is thinking. They need to tell us how they think. And Paul and I, and I'm sure St. Louis, as well as I'm sure there's another one, other podcast after, who are willing even more to go there. There's other podcast after are willing to hear your voice because the public has a right to know who you are, what your philosophy is, and really what the future is if we have you in office. So I do congratulate the mayor of carries that are here. I congratulate Mr. Benet, Mr. Rayman, both of them for doing this, this form. I also congratulate Mr. Gerina for being here. I know it's very difficult for, for, you know, for a person to get out of their normal huddle zone and you know the work for a debate. So I understand how you feel. The same thing goes with Mr. Gilbert. I believe he's right, but yes, Gilbert, for going to what he's going to do. It's not easy. But let me tell you, you got friends here. Do not feel intimidated. There are no doctor questions here. We just want to know what your thoughts are. We want to know your philosophy. We want to know your character. We want to know how you feel. And if you got the right tempo with the public, then you're going to catch up. And unfortunately, some of the other people didn't connect it, or hopefully next time they'll be able to make it. So again, I want to thank you all for giving me an opportunity to work through your desire. I give congratulations to all the candidates that are here. It takes a lot. And we see it and we know it. And we're really rooting for you. We really are. We want to succeed in whichever way you can to get to Mexico. And that's why Paul is here, I'm here. I'm sure Mr. Moira is here. I'm sure the other podcasting are here because we really want to open this forum up for you so that we could probably could know what we said. But there are no doctor questions. I really wish more people could laugh. Paul, I'll pass on to you. Thank you.
Now I'm going to say. We're going to start off the debate, and I'll talk a little bit about it. And you're, none of that, that the judge said there's no doctor questions. Believe me, have people call me that and write, or we're going to attack this person, or we're going to attack the other one. Why are we laying? How come us, how come I listen to people? If you have a platform that you can use, to put the word out, use it. If you have a barber shop that everybody goes to and they sit, they sit down there for hours cutting their hair in a mustache or a beard. Tell them what you think. Those soldiers, right? There's a lot of people that they need. And need a little bit of encouragement for a long way. Now, the first, the first candidates that are coming in is the city council, district one. Some great individuals from. It was, if you've seen the program, there was a young lady that was actually, you know, comic. She said she was going to walk out because she did not have money. And that was kind of sad for her because, you know, she seemed like a nice person. She still is. That doesn't mean she can't be a leader in that area that can do it. Can push forward. Politics is very different, but I assume you're not in it. 20 years ago, there was no Republicans or Democrats. You were either with a judge or the sheriff. And if you were with one, the other side blackballed your business. If you were the other one, the other side blackballed your business. You would be like, that's funny. That ended, kind of, kind of grew, kind of disappeared. There, it popped up again. In 2020, we were passing food. It just went haywire. We saw the old actions and ones. People said, it's not going to happen, this is not. It came back up again. So I said to myself, you know how many good people are in there? And many, many people forward. Folks, the radio is a precious city. It's a beautiful city, it's great people. People that I see right in front of me. Every single one of them. I see some people here that do not come out to debate. So not getting involved, probably, if you're necessarily, guessing me before. Okay? So with that being said, I want to introduce this again. Please. Mr. Gilbert Gonzales? I'm going to talk a little bit about it. I'm going to give everybody a one minute, one minute opening. One minute to respond to the questions. Each one's going to have the same questions. Run in the back, either one. Okay? One minute closing. And if you guys want to say anything else, we'll do that for them. Okay, we can start off with beautiful lady, Jessica Carlos. Mr. Gerina, if you can open.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Paul, for having us this evening and giving us the opportunity to inform all of you our platform. I am Heidi Vena Sanz-Guerra. I'm running for city council, District One, that's in South Cora. I'm sitting here now. And my commitment to all of you is to work harder every day and move South Cora forward. And that's what we need. And I know that Paul talked about how the post-COVID and the turmoil. And it's not a secret that there were so many, you know, we had several city managers in the last year, year and a half. And so with that being said, it's a mess. And so, you know, we're hoping that we can tell you all who, who's who let to do a better job. And that's what we're here for. I know Gilbert and I are not public speakers, but we're here very proud to tell you all, you know, what we're, we're going to do for you.
Okay. Mr. Gonzalez?
My name is Gilbert Gonzalez. I started my career back when I was turning 20. I started working at the Juneau. Most of you remember, it was back in Chicago Street. That's where I started my career. I've been in public service for 24 years now. What I offer District One and the constituents there, my neighbors and so is that. And it's very important that I'm ready to retire and dedicate myself full time. I know councilmen, most of you all know, I know councilmen is a hard time job. But I feel District One needs to pick it up a notch and start working 8 to 10 hours a day where we can, you know, invest in our community. So that is very important, you know? Some people will come up to me and say, well, why do you want to retire? And I say that it's just important and my commitment is, is to dedicate myself to District One and the city as a whole. So that means that.
All right. We're going to start off with a first question, and I'm going to go ahead and raise it to Mr. Gonzalez. What do you hope to accomplish as the city councilman?
Well, as I said, I said again, I believe full time for years is still not enough. But, you know, there's, there's a lot of issues going on in District One and the city as a whole, city as a whole. I know the water issue is ongoing, and everybody mentioned because it's a very, it's a very delicate situation. You know, we need to get that in track. That's why I say full time because, you know, I want to visit these departments and make sure they're doing the proper maintenance to that. Another one is that I want to bring South Cora a much needed animal shelter. That is an ongoing issue in South Cora. And very importantly, very important is that there's a lot of high traffic speeding motors in our district. A lot of accidents are going on. So I want to have experts conduct surveys so we can implement speed limits around District One. Not only in certain blocks, but believing the community as a whole.
Thank you. You say Gerina?
A question.
A question. What do you hope to accomplish as a city councilman?
I think my priority is going to be the water infrastructure. Maybe in South Cora, we have had, it's happened to us twice, we didn't have any water for modern handbags. So that, that was very difficult for, especially the elderly, women, people with young children. I also think that the safety and the protection needs to be addressed. And also the streets, we need to, there is a problem in South Cora. I think our ordinance needs to be addressed, they need to be enforced, and they're not. We have a big problem with the animals. And, but more, mostly importantly, I think that enforcing the ordinances and educating ourselves and many of our South Coras is a fact that what we're supposed to do, we're not doing. And so I also think that we all see. That's it? Sorry.
The next question is going to be towards you, but I'll explain it. Recently, the mayor, this administration of Laredo have been pushing forward a bi-national park. The numbers by these activists that are pushing forward this endeavor claim to be between 200 million, 500 million, over a billion dollars. They claim that it's going to have trails and walkways so you can go to Mexico at any time after you're leaving. They can convince you to come over here after you leave here as well. So there's a lot of rhetoric going back before them, they don't know exactly what's going on. The group pushing the park also mentioned that it's going to be fully funded by our federal government and also hooked up to Mexico. Now, now they've changed the shore. Now they want to push it to the taxpayer. What would you say to this and about pushing this project to the taxpayer?
Well, Paul, I will tell you that I don't want to raise taxes and I don't want to pay more taxes. We have, we own a commercial building and we pay a lot of taxes. And people misunderstand the fact that because you're in the south, you don't pay taxes like the north. And that is totally not true. On the, on the park, I don't think we know enough about the park. I don't think we have a gator. I think the truth that they missed is true. I'm not saying I support it full force, but I will tell you that I don't know the details. I don't think any of us do. It needs to be protected to us. And it's not going to happen next week or next month. I think we have other priorities that we have to address. And if you're looking at a project 10 years from now, I think we have other priorities that really need to address.
Mr. Gonzalez?
I mean, there's other priorities than before we walked, and other to crawl with the city. There's a lot more important priorities. And coming to a park, I know it's, you know, with walking trails and all, it's much needed. But maybe, you know, not put the burden on the taxpayers and put that as a referendum where the community can vote so they can decide. And have the majority, you know, decide on that. I'm not against parks. It's, it's a beautiful day when you see people walking, you know, making awesome and stuff, you know? So like I said, the best idea would be not put the burden on the taxpayers and maybe go over a random where we can have the community decide.
Okay. Now, Mr. Gonzalez, the next question is going to be for you. There's many, many times of different campaigns, different candidates. Right before the campaign, all of a sudden, there's someone, never been posting anything on social media, they're a long time before them. And as soon as campaign comes out, everybody's adopting it now. Everybody's getting water. Everybody's wearing a pink ribbon. There before, when they're on it, where. So with that being said, how have you, before your campaign, been volunteering and serving the city of Laredo?
Thank you, Paul, that is a very important question. And I would say that, you know, for those elected officials that are out there or here and, and, you know, have won these elections, you see, you can wake up one day and say, I want to run. And those of you that are here know that that does not happen, you know? So it is very important to, and I told this to you, start going to the community, for the community, for your community now. The need is always there regardless. You see, when I started back at the Juneau, I knew I'd run for something someday. And I keep, I kept seeing opportunities pass. And I kept seeing opportunities pass and pass, and I was working for the community. I was putting in my end in COVID and, and, you know, we were distributing waters, we were distributing masks, you know, I made hands-on during the weekends, the holidays, you know? So it's very important, and I told this to you, there's a lot of youth candidates now. Start working for your community now.
Thank you. Jessica Ana?
I have worked for a, I've been official for the last 30 years, and I've been in public service for 30 years. Um, always upon holiday, there's always things to, whether it's, I'm not gonna obviously, from a doctor's appointment to a vaccine, we're very much involved in getting the vaccine and not even when we couldn't get it. And, um, the need, there's always a need for these people. There's always something that people from trash pickup to just a full holiday and being able to address their issues, whatever it is, whatever they need, we need to address. And I've always been able to help, thank God.
Thank you. The next question will be towards you, let's start it off. Once more, people are up, people one day wake up like Mr. Gonçalves, and say, "I wanna run for a public office." Never before done anything, never before knowing what's around them in their own neighborhood. So this question goes to that, this one's from small businesses. What neighborhood do you live in? And what are your favorite businesses that you partake in directly in this?
I live, I live, we live in Century City, and we have a commercial building that has several businesses down the street from us. So we buy our sweet bread from the bakery and we buy tires from down the street. Uh, we visit different eateries in the south. We have not much of the north, but we do have some delicious in the south, some delicious eateries. Um, I get my nuts in the south too, so that's a plus. And, uh, but definitely try to keep the buckets mature kind of the south.
Mr. Gonçalves?
Um, I live in, in Elvendos Obispo area, that I've been involved in the entire district as a whole, San Francisco, Sociedad, the various needs. So what I do is, when, when a time of crisis, I take my volunteers and my team and my donations to the heart of the district, which is their various needs, and we'll set up outside and we'll start helping the community there. And we've been doing that for years. And, I mean, even after this, you know, I still wanna be involved with the community in the small business environment.
Thank you. You know, many small businesses that are trying to reopen after post-COVID, as well as initiatives here in the area, but they all have the same complaint. When they go in to open for a temporary electric permit, it takes anywhere between 20 to 30 days. You go back in there, get a check for you to be able to open another one. When businesses are paying rent, uh, the inspectors are paying public rent. So when we go do that, when we move forward with that, what would you do to change and make it easier for people to open up their business?
Well, electrical is something very serious. I'm not an electrician, but I know things have to be, you know, you have to have your dutch roll to open up a business, because there's always the, the, the public consumers and stuff that are gonna be telling the employees that are gonna be in, in, in danger. So yes, I do not understand why it takes 30 days, but it's important because I know electrical, they have to have everything in order. So I wanna be involved in the city department where we can kind of start speeding up things. So we can have these businesses ready enough to operate.
Jessica Ana?
As I've been walking the south for the last seven months, uh, I've been talking to different groups also, and one of the main things or one of the concerns is that the building department takes forever. You know, I hope, you can go on with, as far as they can get, 10 days, two to six months, according to these people that address the issue. I think that we do need to look into the building department. We need to address what is holding these, these, um, these permits. I think we need to visit other cities, larger cities. They have either a different system, a different program, and evaluate them and see if we can bring that to Coraedo. Because obviously, they can do one in San Antonio or Keaton in three days, and we can't do it here. We must be missing something, and I think we need to address that.
Sure. Now, before, Jessica Ana, if you are not elected, what would you do? To cut it out, out the community, continue helping out the community? Or are you gonna do like maybe just let the community slide off?
You know, Paul, I'm gonna be me, and I'll tell you why. Because I'm not doing things for people and listening to their concerns and helping them out because I'm running for City Council. I've done this on my own, and I will continue to do it. And my husband and I talked about it today. I said, "It's God's will, and we'll continue to live our lives." We help the less fortunate with what we can, and we will continue to do that. And if I can extend a helping hand to whoever it is, and a lot of you that are here that know me, know that I'm ready, and I'll do it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, Paul, win, lose, or draw, I still plan to retire. So, so to me, winning is gonna be working harder. It's in our blood. We've done this all our lives, our father taught us well. Uh, if, if, we're just, if we're embedded in South Coraedo, we know the issues. We know the needs. We're so involved in South Coraedo. So win, lose, or draw, you're still gonna see us out there. When it's not me, it's my dad, when it's my dad, it's my brother. And, you know, we would like to see more people get involved with our community. Even people from the west, from the north, let's work together. Puntos hacemos más for the community.
This question will be towards you, and we started off in terms of... If elected, what three steps would you take to put our city back in a normal financial condition?
Okay, well, first of all, leave our city, uh, and I believe, you have, our city sits in roughly an $800 million budget. So what we need to do is, you know, be basically, basically aware and financially where we can approve these budgets and it can be important and efficient. You know, there's departments out there that wants the building department, and, and, you know? So we just need to be physically responsible with these, with these ongoing issues. It's a, it's a $800 million budget, roughly. So it's very important that we're there, that we do our homework. Even, uh, I went back to when I know, when I knew I was gonna run, that our councilman, our current councilman was gonna turn out, I went back to college just to finish my college degree so I can be basically aware because logistics is gonna come to our desk and sit. You know, we have to do math, we have to be prepared for whatever that comes, comes to the beach.
Thank you. Jessica Ana?
Again, I, we need the infrastructure for our water. We need more funds for police protection and for our fire safety. That's the, and we wanna make, I wanna make sure that the roads are gonna be safe enough for your travel every day. But most importantly, I wanna make sure that our tax dollars are spent wisely. And I have to keep in mind, and I think all eight of us that are elected, that get elected or sitting on there should keep in mind that this is not our money, it's your money. Our taxes, and it's, we have to, we pay your taxes, I pay everybody else. So we have to remember that we have to be smart spenders, I think, and it's our money. You know, it's your money that we need to make sure that it's spent wisely.
Thank you. You're gonna have the next question, Mr. Gonçalves. What advantage for City City and working for local government?
It has taught me the needs and the ones of the people of our city of Coraedo. There's always, being working for a commissioner and working for the sheriff, there's always a need. Somebody always needs something, some good, some bad, but there's always a need. And I have been taught that if we can help, we're gonna help. And there's a lot of things out there that we have to educate people as far as, there's so many programs that are available that some people don't know they're about there. I got a phone call today, just today, about being able to help somebody because they're in need of a roof. And, you know, there's so many programs out there with post-COVID, but they don't know that. So I, my life lesson from working for a medical official is that there's always something to do.
Mr. Gonçalves?
Well, Paul, in my career, I worked at the JP Court System where I gained a lot of experience. And that JP, that JP's, uh, board covers entire District 1. So you see, I'm aware of the issues, and that's why I'm a step ahead, you know? Because you work with crews, you work with crews, and there's a lot of programs out there. You know, drug programs are very important, mental programs are very important. So that's where we, as councilmen, come in and provide these programs as their party believe, where we can help our community and, and, you know, and be the statistics, the current statistics.
Thank you. Now, the next question will be over here. What disadvantage do you see in working for local government?
Disadvantage, working for local government and, and, you know, and being a candidate? I don't see one disadvantage. I mean, you know, we learn something in a day. It's been 24 years, and working in these agencies and in these public offices, there's a lot of advantages because y'all know, we learned something in a day.
Jessica Ana?
I don't think there's a disadvantage from our experience working for the government. Um, I think we're under a microscope most of the time, and everybody's always hoping to see what you're gonna do next, that's for sure. But as far as like a disadvantage, I don't see a disadvantage.
Now, the next question will be from the side. Since, we can use government names, Ratsuit Food, China Food, Food One Food, hit the radio in 2020, small businesses, the backbone of our community who are devastated. Just look at them all, look at Saunders Delmar, Downtown, small businesses all the way around. If small business owners were looked upon as criminals by our medical profession, as well as others, 175 doctors, you could tell, they all signed a letter and they wanted to kill small businesses. At that same time, 300 positives came out, no one pulled any small business. Now, many small businesses are currently threatened by police, close to many here in the back, our inspectors, and we can't lie, there's plenty of video showing. With that being said, how would you, if elected, render to service to small businesses and place regulations for that type of discrimination not to happen again?
You know, Paul, I have to tell you that some of those signatures of 175 doctors are some of our friends. And we have a health board, and I, I, I'm sorry, but I don't agree with having a health authority and having 175 doctors tell us that the business has to be closed because we're in the middle of a pandemic, which we have never lived through. I would think that we would have to listen to them, that's my opinion. And as far as the small businesses, I don't think that the police department were treated like criminals by saying, "You have to follow the law." It is what it is. All of us were in this here, people were dying, we didn't know what was gonna happen, and we had to address what they were telling us to do with the CDC at the time. Did we agree with it? Probably not. But it was what we had to live through. And so, if I, I would have done, I would have done everything to save it. And there was a lot of funding, Paul, we don't know who got funding and who didn't. There was a lot of resources, state, federal, that they could provide somebody to fund. There was a lot of businesses that did survive. And if they didn't survive, I don't think it was because the doctors closed their business because they weren't certified sales.
Thank you, Mr. Gonçalves.
Well, Paul, there was a lot of uncertainty, uncertainty throughout the world. It was a pandemic, a very dangerous one. We all know, a lot of people had lost their loved ones. And, you know, the right thing was to listen to the, to the science professionals. We were living day by day. I can't believe, I still can't believe, you know, that there was so many things we enforced throughout our city, but we had to go along with, with the cars that were being built. There was a lot of uncertainty, and now we're, we're getting back to our norm and where we can offer these small businesses, you know, some passive agents or so, so they can start coming back up. Um, but this was, this caught the entire nation of guard. So, yeah, it was, it was so important that we followed the guidance of, of the professionals and we just were taking it day at a time.
This question was from small businesses, that's my answer. But now I also know those, those 175 doctors, and I think they had it all. And, uh, now, for closing, we're gonna go ahead and go with, uh, Mr. Gonçalves.
Well, uh, for closing, I want to thank everybody that's here tonight and the viewers at home. You see, for, for the past couple of months and these coming weeks, we, the candidates, are gonna be doing the talking. Come up over 24, you guys are gonna be the talking at the polls. Both Gilbert Gonçalves, 2022, we are ready.
Again, mi gracias to all of you that joined this evening to listen to our concerns and our views for the betterment of the city of Coraedo. I'd like to, on behalf of my husband, Ronaldo, and I, who I would not be up here without him, every day, it's, we walk, it's, it's just really, the people that we have met in South Coraedo, and we stopped, we knew a lot of people, but people are coming out because they wanna change. And we're ready for a change, and we need to move Coraedo forward. Again, mi gracias for all of you, and together, we can make change in November. Yeah.
I'm gonna run, I'm gonna go through to you, to give you all a break now. And listen for it, at the end of the day, I hope also to whoever wins sort of makes it and help the other one out, keep continuing moving forward, because Coraedo is...
Will we shut up?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's important, Paul.
We should have, but I have to say...
That's important.